Put me in order with roll call.
Frank?
Here.
Brentwick? Schultz?
Here.
Gargano?
Here.
Kenny? Eric Friends?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Knudsen?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council will receive information on non-agenda topics brought before the council by members of the public. The council will not discuss these topics and will not take action on any of this meeting. If there's anyone who's on the agenda, we should be heard. We will go to consent agenda. One motion approves all items on consent agenda. Number one is approval minutes for the meeting held on September 12th, 2022. And number two is approved denied 2022, 2023 poll workers, Kerry Colville and Stephanie Allen. Any question on consent or I'll take the motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kenny?
Second.
Seconded by Stevenson. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General emergency of two items, and item number one is approved denied. Review and consider adoption of resolution 4482-22 approving tid number nine amendment number three. Tim?
Thanks Mayor. So as you remember, this was part of the agreement that we made with Supra when they announced their expansion. That we were going to amend our tid number nine to include the parcel to provide incentives for that expansion. In addition to that, we also decided to remove some parcels from tid nine. Some of them were already developed without incentive and didn't need to have any tid assistance at all with it. So the parcel that we're bringing in is parcel one down here in the lower left. And then the parcels in red, there's actually two and three are up there, and three is a very small parcel. And then parcel four, those will be the ones that will be taken back out of the tid. I guess I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Tim?
Is two and three J's?
No. That's the trailer park courtyard, so that's an empty area for the courtyard.
Yep.
So they have a planned expansion there for mobile homes, which really does nothing for property tax. It does a lot for personal property tax, but not for property tax.
But two and three is J's.
Or is that east of J's?
This is J's, yeah. So two and three is.
It is J's?
Yeah, that's J's, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And that was developed without any tid.
Yep, just wanted to know.
Any other questions for Tim? I'll take a motion once in order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Peterson to approve resolution 4042-22.
Second.
Seconded by Schultz. Anything further? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is approved denied, resolution 4483-22 exempting the city from paying SOCOM library tax. Jacob?
Um, so for this one, we pass this every single year. Um, we put the amount of money that the city allocates to the library on our tax levy as opposed to the county. So by signing this resolution, the taxpayers in Reesburg aren't taxed on both the city's library levy and the county's. This exempts us from the county levy and then they're made whole of whatever we decide to levy for them. So this is something we do every year. It just ensures that no one's paying taxes twice for the library.
Very good, perfect explanation. Take a motion once in order, unless there's any questions.
Yes, good, please. Resolution 4483-22.
Motion by Gargano?
Second.
Seconded by Kenny. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Recommendations from boards, committees, commissions, we have four items. Number one, for the plan commission approved denied resolution 4480-22 adopting a certified survey map for parcel zero three zero dash zero five nine five dash zero 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 in the extraterritorial zone. Brian, how you doing today?
Good, thank you Mayor. Uh, so yeah, this lot is a lot that's on agriculture and ET area. Um, it's a regular shaped lot, but at least half of it is meet the minimum higher 50 foot width. Um, the town has approved it, ET board has approved it, and plant commission has also permitted approval. So, um, that's what you're asking for your approval tonight.
Any questions for Brian? All right, thank you Brian. I'll take it back to council discussion, I'll take a motion once in order.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Broschley?
Second.
Seconded by Knudsen. All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number two for the plant commission approved denied second reading and public hearing for ordinance 1944-22 adopting the 2042 comprehensive plan for the city of Reesburg, amending chapter six ninety specifically sections six ninety dash one three four and six ninety dash one three six. Brian?
So last summer, the plant commission started the process of coming up with a new twenty year plan. Uh, so we had a kickoff meeting last summer. Uh, and then from there, we did a lot of public engagement. That's a lot of basis for your recommendations. So there was two websites, there was online surveys, paper surveys, stakeholder interviews. Uh, we went to the Fall Festival last year at the fire station. And then during that, and then after that, then your consultants, Orrin, Jeff and Sean worked on the text of the plan and the maps, the visuals and so on. Um, finished that probably around late spring, at least, yeah, around late spring. Uh, but they were waiting for the 2020 census information to come out, which as of now, it still is not out yet. So we decided, the plant commission decided to move on with what we had at that point, so. They have, the plant commission has recommended approval of it, they've got a resolution for that. Um, and we got a PowerPoint here to kind of get highlights of it. And Orrin from Hope this year is one of our consultants, so I'll go through the PowerPoint.
Thanks Brian, welcome back Orrin. How are you today?
Thank you Mayor, thank you for that warm welcome, members of the council. For those I have not met personally yet, I'm Orrin Semawal with both infrastructure and environment policy. We're kind of our Milwaukee office. Um, we've been working with you all over the past years, Brian mentioned, on this plan. Uh, it's been our privilege to help put this together. I'll give a brief run through with Jacob's help here, if you don't mind advancing slides for me and give a little for questions after. So why we're here today, we still need your feedback. I hate to use the word final, but essentially everything leading up till now is in a draft document that's before you. Uh, I'm going to present a summary of the process that we've gone through and then we're going to discuss your questions and hopefully move forward with adoption of the plan. Next slide please. So our project timeline, believe it or not, this all started back in June a year ago. Now it seems like 10 years ago thanks to COVID time, the COVID time warp. So we got our kickoff meeting June 23rd, 2021, we kind of started the plan in July. We were looking at a 14 month project timeline, which puts us right on track where we want to be. Next slide please. Uh, so the council adopted a public participation plan early on in our process and we've stuck to that. Essentially, the public participation plan were written procedures designed to foster public participation in the community. Next slide please. So as Brian mentioned, we had a pretty robust plan that included a project website, social media through the city's Facebook page, Mind Mixer, which was an online hub for our public engagement. Uh, and kind of a clearinghouse for all the information that we produced throughout this process. Stakeholder interviews, which some of you were a part of. As Brian mentioned, we were at Harvest Fest, which is the picture there, enjoying the chili. Community survey, interactive public workshop, which was at the high school on a baloney day in January, the girls' basketball team was doing their thing. And we had steering committee meetings to kind of check in with the plant commission throughout the process. Next slide please. So the way we have designed this plan is two-part. There's a vision document, which is chapter one, vision recommendations. That includes visions, goals and recommendations for the various chapters in the plan, all in one spot. And then we've got our analysis, which is organized by smart growth chapters. So the vision document, we anticipate being a powerful storyteller for the community to use for marketing purposes, economic development meetings that Tim or other staff may be having. Overall, we wanted the plan to be a more graphical end product than what maybe existed in the past. And we wanted the recommendations to exemplify the ambitious and visionary aspirations of the community. I think we've achieved that, I hope you all agree. This next image is the future land use map, or as we call it, a vision map. So this tells the future 20-year story of the community in one document that could be slid across the table as a, or left as a placemat at a meeting. We'll get into this in a little more detail further on. So we're going to go through each of the chapters and just, I've got a couple example recommendations from those. This is just kind of a high level look. So chapter three, housing, recommendation to provide a variety of housing types, costs and locations throughout the city and promote healthy and active neighborhoods, which is something that's also supported further in the transportation chapter. Next slide please. Uh, chapter four, transportation. Promote the development of roadways that are designed to safely accommodate street function for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists and drivers. Uh, as part of that, consider the adoption of a complete streets policy, which would be a policy decision that this body would have to make. Coordinate transportation decisions with land use decisions and utilize the 2042 streets and highways map here and to serve as the official street map for the city of Reesburg. Next slide please. So here is that map, uh, which is something that needed to be updated. There's some things that have happened, some ideas that were pulled, some ideas that were added based on the development pattern that's been occurring. Next slide please. Chapter five, utilities and community facilities. Consider the use of sustainable design principles in community facilities, something that's already happening and that we're essentially recommending that you continue for future facilities. Uh, obviously, the new public works building included some sustainable design components to it. Provide a park system that meets the needs of future population of Reesburg, providing city residents with a wide variety of accessible recreation opportunities. Implement Reesburg's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan as it is developed on a rotating five-year basis. Next slide please. Here you have the parks and open space map, which provides updated information and a nice visual for the community. And what's also nice about this map is that it incorporates the bike routes that are signed throughout the community and shows them in relation to the parks, which is great. Uh, chapter six, agricultural, natural and cultural resources. Uh, we want to encourage the creation of a sustainable environment that successfully balances urban economic growth with the preservation of agricultural and natural resources. And we want to preserve the agricultural character of the region. Chapter seven, economic development. Prioritize recruitment of businesses to those that provide a living wage and encourage compact and mixed-use development and redevelopment opportunities, which we'll talk about a little more further as well. Chapter eight, intergovernmental cooperation. Reesburg will work effectively with nearby overlapping jurisdictions to promote mutually beneficial cooperation and will explore new opportunities to expand partnerships to increase the city's impact for residents in the southwest region. And one of the ways that we tried to foster that through this process was a presentation to the ETC board, which took place not that long ago. Chapter nine, land use. Follow the desired development areas, which we'll talk about a little further, and vision notes when applying the future land use map to the development and capital planning projects and adopt design guidelines to improve commercial development quality within the East Gateway area, which we'll get into a little more coming up here as well. So this planning effort utilized the Wisconsin statutes Smart Growth Planning Law for guidance. There are nine elements that a plan needs to address per state law. And we have done that. And that is how the plans are organized beyond chapter one, which is again that visions and recommendations element. So we've got issues and opportunities, housing and transportation. Next slide please. Utilities and community facilities, agricultural, natural and cultural resources, economic development. Next slide please. Intergovernmental cooperation, land use, and last but not least, implementation. Next slide please. Couple of things we wanted to highlight, economic development chapter and then the land use, some items in there as well. So there's a mini market analysis. There's some information about your tids that we put into one spot. Redevelopment districts, economic development, financial programs and other plans and partners that I think are useful to have all in one spot. And the main sections and areas of interest that we've just gone through, we've got, next slide please, a map of the tids. So this is all of the active tid areas currently in the city. It's nice to see that all in one spot. Next slide. Chapter nine, land use. Uh, I like this image of the mill building because it has a mural on which it says agriculture, natural resources and industry. So the three pillars of what this community was built on essentially, which are all also land uses. The existing land uses are on the map in the plan. We've got the existing zoning on a new map in the plan and the future land use map and notes. Next slide please. So here's your existing zoning. Obviously, any zoning actions that take place in the future need to be consistent with this comprehensive master plan that we've put together cooperatively here. The future land use map. Some of the details that we wanted to get into on this. There's some new ideas and policies that are in the margin of this. You've got your future land use categories, but then supporting future land use map vision. We've got desired development areas and vision notes. So these desired development areas are located, you can go to the next slide, in kind of these dashed polygon areas throughout the community. And there's a description of each of those. Some examples include the downtown focused area, which is kind of a no-brainer. It's the main downtown commercial core of the community. We've also got the highway commercial improvement area, the East Gateway Commercial Area, industrial transition area near the airport, the southwest Gateway Area and the North Viking Gateway area. So gateways are something that this plan talks about. These are areas to consider when not only new development comes, but also when you're making capital improvements in the community. Um, and there's more language in the plan that speaks to that. But think of them, another term would be target investment areas. That's essentially what these areas are getting at. And if we go to the next slide, we'll start to tie some of this stuff together. So we also prepared these diagrams. So the commercial development diagram here reinforces the intent of the East Gateway Commercial Desire Development Area, which would be along Highway 33 coming into town from the east. Some of the design concepts here are going to be building blocks for one of the recommendations we covered, which was to adopt formal design guidelines for parts of the community, or at least this target area. Buildings fronting the street where possible, parking lots screening. So nice landscaping essentially. Appropriately scaled cutoff site landing. Coordinated pedestrian paths, loading areas located behind buildings, screen trash enclosures located out of view when possible and cross access between sites. Promoting cross access in a busy corridor like that would be ideal moving forward for future development. It's nice to not have traffic hat to go back onto the arterial, but rather just, you know, move between businesses. Uh, all of these are designed to promote a cohesive environment for the corridor. Like I said, this would lay the foundation for the adoption of design guidelines, which is a recommendation in chapter nine of the plan. And it reinforces the community gateway vision note as this eastern area is designated as a community gateway. Next slide please. Here's another diagram that we created. And I got to give credit to Sean Malarki, who's our, does our GIS mapping, who used SketchUp and some other programs to create these. This is a companion to the mixed-use vision notes. There's some areas of the community where there's a number that associates to the mixed-use note. This reinforces the recommendation to encourage compact and mixed-use development and redevelopment opportunities in chapter seven, the economic development chapter. Uh, reinforces the recommendation to encourage infill development on underutilized or blighted business district properties in chapter seven, economic development. Reinforces the recommendation that infill contiguous and brownfield development be encouraged over greenfield development in chapter nine, land use. And again, reinforces the gateway vision note. So this is something that, this isn't a prescription. If a developer comes in, you don't hand him this and say, here's what you do. This is to provide an intent. It's for somebody to know what you're trying to achieve in these certain target areas. Next slide please. The neighborhood corner store diagram, this is not something new at all. We definitely are borrowing this from the past. This is a companion to the neighborhood commercial corner store vision note. These types of uses were commonplace when this community was developed. This is something you could walk down the street to go to as a commercial business that was convenient. It's coming back in vogue in planning in general and it's a good fit for certain areas of this community. And this reinforces the recommendation to encourage development patterns more compatible with non-motorized travel. If somebody can just walk down or bike down to the corner store to pick up whatever it may be that they're providing, a service or some type of retail. Reinforces the recommendation to encourage compact and mixed-use development and redevelopment opportunities. And it reinforces the recommendation to continue to support strong mix of industrial and commercial uses in the city. Uh, that concludes our summary. Again, I'm on hand if there are any questions regarding any part of the process or the plans up.
Any questions for Orrin? I want to thank you again Orrin for your and your group's hard work to get me this come to reality and thank the plant commission, the steering committee, the public in general that helped out to make this come to fruition. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you very much.
Discussion. Before I take public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance 1944-22? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance 1944-22? Final call, anyone wishing to speak for or against the adoption of ordinance 1944-22? Here you go, I'll close the public hearing, take it back to council discussion or I'll take a motion once in order.
Comment, Your Honor.
Yes.
I also would like to thank Orrin and his team as a member of the plant commission and steering committee. This process, over the last time that we did this, was so much more efficient and professional. Thank you. And as a side note, I'd like to note that this was accomplished in 15 months. It's a major undertaking from the city. And we met the timeline forced, if you will, or under mandates from the state and the like. I find it appalling that the federal government has yet to be able to publish census information. It is a major part of this plan and it'll have to be noted that you will have to go elsewhere to find that information. Normally, it would be included in these documents. No fault of our fine people or presented it to us, prepared for us. But I just think that it's worth noting to everybody here and to the public that the inept action of the federal government affects us here locally. And this is a great example of how.
Anyone else or I'll take a motion?
I forgot one thing, I apologize, I got this email rather late today, but I had a citizen reach out to me with a couple of questions. And I'm just kind of going to paraphrase some of the things that he was worried about, if that's okay. I didn't get to kind of look at this and then go back to the comprehensive plan either. So again, these aren't my thoughts. But the citizen was very interested in whether or not the boundaries to the west and the east were going to be looked at as far as historical and agricultural, architectural areas. Let's see. He was wondering if the Baraboo River banks addressed in the document would also be reconstructed for the Native American mounds that were destroyed and leveled on the east side of town as that land becomes owned by the city. He was worried that we listed the state architectural site inventory, but we didn't seem to list any other ARIs, IHIs and NR sites that were looked into. I apologize, I wish I had more time to review this, but it looks like the, to the west and the east, he just is worried that when we get the land that we're going to be looking into the Native American village sites and workshops that were in those areas and make sure that we're paying close attention to our history before we were to build anything on those sites. That's really all I can share.
And we do. So there's archaeological studies that have to be done. We got to do an archaeological study that we have to park before we put the splash pad in, so all that stuff. And you tell Matt that that's what we do.
Thank you.
I told him here, but he's not here tonight.
He is at a soccer game, he felt really bad he couldn't come and speak. And I feel even worse because, like I said, I got it kind of late, so.
Sure, that puts you in a tough spot. Anyone else? Now I'll take a motion of ones in order.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Knudsen, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gargano. Jake, roll call whenever you're ready.
Brian?
Yes.
Brentwick?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Gargano?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Stevenson?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Thanks again Orrin, talking with your group that we've researched everything on.
Rich at work.
Yeah, awesome, awesome work. All right, well, who died? Number three, for the plant commission is approved denied. Amend Plan Development Group Site Plan for Huntington Park Apartments, 1840 Huntington Park Drive, building number three. Brian?
Uh, so basically, since this is a PUD that council, you approved the original one, so that's why we're here back again for the amendment. Basically, it's three more units than what was originally approved. Uh, because then when they did building two, they divided it or they short, or they took some of the three bedrooms and made studio apartments out of them. So they actually exceeded the limit to what was originally approved by three apartments. So that's really the gist of what we're here, the proposal for tonight.
Any questions for Brian?
Thank you Brian.
Council discussion, I'll take a motion of ones in order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Stevenson?
Second.
Seconded by Broschley. Anything further? All favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, and from the plant commission, number four is approved denied first reading and set up public hearing for October 24th, 2022 for ordinance 1937-22 amending chapter six ninety floodplain zoning.
Brian? So I, last time we get a So I last time we did a a large or a large amendment to this one floodplain ordinance was two thousand and fifteen. Uh so I could go I could go through each section or I could just tell you that all these proposals are required by FEMA and the DNR. We can't change it, we can't we can't go in less, we can't change it, but we can go more if you want, but uh. Uh so I had put together a feat that DNR has approved it, the draft anyway, so uh that's why we're here tonight for uh first uh scheduled first hearing or uh first reading board tonight, so.
Any questions for Brian? We had the same discussion with the Plan Commission, didn't we? We did. All right, thank you, Brian. Comments, discussion, I'll take a motion to set public hearing.
A motion to set.
Motion by Branshway.
Second.
Seconded by Schulte. Anything further? All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we'll have that public hearing on October twenty-fourth. City Administrator Reports, number one, presentation, Reesburg Fieldhouse update. Tim?
Just a quick update on the Fieldhouse project, um we had something a little odd happen. You know, the uh the Fieldhouse is currently out to bid right now, and we had uh Holtz Builders as our construction management. Part of the bid process was that we had a mandatory meeting for all general contractors interested in bidding here at City Hall. Nobody showed up, so theoretically, no one could bid on the project. And this is the this is the odd part. What happened was is that Holtz, based on their legal opinion, was not going to bid on the project. They thought it was uh it was too familiar, they didn't want to give any trouble, and that was and that was fine. Unfortunately, the other contractors were under the assumption that Holtz was going to bid on the project, and roughly seventy-five to eighty percent of the time, the construction manager ends up with the bid because they're very familiar with the project from the very beginning. So they didn't show. Our local guys, the Fries and the Kramers, because of competitive reasons, were not interested in working, having Holtz as a layer between the owner, us, and then them as the construction as a general contractor, so they didn't bid. So we made a game time decision, um I spoke with Tom Holtz, and we both determined it was in the best interest of the city that we part company adequately. So Holtz is no longer our construction manager, we will do we'll do this project as a single prime. Uh we rebid it, it's going to cost us two weeks, and that's it. And then based on that, we've had, I think, interest from seven different general contractors who are now interested in that bidding the job. So just a small wrinkle, um based on all the other wrinkles that we've had, this is very, very much there. But I just want you to be aware of it because we had talked about Holtz being construction manager and all, it's not going to be the case. We'll lean heavily on Steve's, no, I'm just kidding, Steve, on A D C I to to help us out with the things that a construction manager would normally do. And A D C I is fine with that. They held the same role with um with public workshops and with the expansion part. So um things will be fine, it's just that there's a two-week wrinkle in it now, so I just wanted to make sure you guys knew about that. I guess I can take any questions about that too if you have some.
Uh so would Holtz be eligible to bid now?
Holtz will bid on it.
Okay.
Yep.
In two weeks out, talking to contractors that do concrete, that's still not a problem, they'll have the concrete done. So they can get the building up and be ready in the same one timeframe.
Yeah, we we imagine it'll still break around late October, early November, there's still more concrete December based on the weather.
Will there be a mandatory meeting again?
There is, and it's Thursday.
Next Thursday?
This Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday?
Yeah.
Hoping that you get a phone call, nobody showed up.
We're in the party and nobody showed up.
I hear twice, excuse me, what? Oh, all right, thank you, Janet. Uh Commission, Committee, Board, Staff Reports, Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec met, and we discussed um the RACA rental agreement with addressing some of the noise issues that have happened in the last, brought really brought to a head this year. Um but it's not it's not the first time that happened. I think we have a little more aggressive route to pass pass through, see how that works. And then uh we evaluated the pool and the swim fees, um approved a modest small increase. It's still a very good deal for people using those facilities. And then Matt gave us updates on all the stuff finishing up the year and getting ready for next year already, so.
Very good, Public Works?
Public Works met. We had a presentation from Town and Country regarding the sewage plant, preliminary layout, uh design, if you will. And we had a discussion regarding the up and coming sewer rate increase. Just so everyone knows, we don't know what that is yet, but it will be first of the year. We anticipate potentially four increases over the next four or five years. The first one will be very modest considering, and um as you know, we gotta pay for eighty-five million dollar facilities. So this will be the first first time we've increased the rates since third since two thousand and thirteen. So it's probably due. And then last and but not least, we got some updates on projects. Laurel Street being probably the big one, um they are going to be pouring curb tentatively this week. The landscaping will be done this week, and the surface of the street will then be shortly thereafter. Was hoping anticipation shortly into two weeks in October or so, and it should be completed.
Very good, thank you very much for that update. Utility Commission?
Utility Commission met on the nineteenth of September. We're currently accepting applications for fiber line workers, which is an ongoing situation, and we'll also be posting for a light speed account specialist in the near future. We had some preliminary discussions about the two thousand and twenty-three budgets and the impacts of inflation and supply chain issues, which as everybody knows, everybody's crystal ball is fuzzy on this, so. The solar array uh at our substation on South Dewey Industrial is installed and will be online in the next couple of weeks, so if you're out and about, take a look at that. It's a nice nice looking uh solar panels. Fiber construction continues to progress. We continue to turn up new customers in the White Mound and Fairfield Projects.
By going on the utility, always is. Uh Plan Commission, uh the Plan Commission met, and pretty much everything we talked about was on your agenda, and you approved everything tonight, um so nothing new other than what you talked about already. Uh zoning board? Nothing there. Any other committee, commission that I missed or staff member that anyone report?
Airport.
Airport Commission?
Airport met last last Thursday. Uh we renewed the lease and operations agreement with the Reesburg Aviation as well as the airport maintenance contract, so those are good now through two thousand and twenty-six. We also had a very positive conversation with the commission meetings as well as two pilots who showed up discussing the possibility of allowing Butterfest to have their demo and tractor pull in the southeast corner of the airport property. Uh we didn't come to any conclusions, but like I say, we had a very positive conversation and it was a fruit for going forward and and doing some more conversations with those people as well as the Butterfest people and and some legal constraints that we're concerned about. So it's a it's a moving project going forward right now.
Looking forward to that being taken care of.
It will be taken care of one way or another.
Absolutely.
Uh sorry, zoning board, I have a comment on the zoning board.
Yes.
Uh so the zoning board did approve the variance for the CSM for Gatlin Fenwick, uh the Webb Park area. Um they put a condition approval that that they would have to come up with a road maintenance agreement because there's about four or five property owners that use that. And last I heard is there's a snag with that, so I don't know what's like, I guess not owners didn't instantly want to do that agreement, so I don't know what what's gonna happen there, last I heard.
Very good, thanks for that update, I'm sure everyone was kind of curious how that went. Okay, anything else? Uh there's one thing I do want to mention, a couple things I want to mention to make sure everyone in the council remembers this Thursday is the um Chambers Annual Meeting and Dinner. Uh I want to make sure everyone, I'm sure, is there anybody going? I mean, anybody not going?
I can't.
Well, that's all right. A little good representation, Christine.
Yes, thank you so much.
I'm looking forward to the evening.
Thank you for agreeing to be our guest speaker.
Absolutely, I can't wait for it. Um and I also want to uh put a plug in because we won't meet before then. Uh on Saturday, October first, eight to three, is the annual Harvest Fest Craft Show at the Reesburg Card Department to go along with Harvest Fest in town. Uh they'll be doing their chili um and hot dogs serving as well um in the rec center. And then the Art and Craft Fair is uh inside the fire station. Um so yeah, make sure you check that out, um there'll be a lot going on uh that weekend as well here. Hardly been this good into the October already. Crazy, crazy. Um with that, we'll go around the workshop.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Well, Peterson?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Missy, friends?
Nothing, thank you.
Adam, Danny?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Nothing, thank you.
Jake?
Um so the New York City's County's Annual Conference is October nineteenth through twenty-first up in La Crosse. Right now, we have Tom and Adam going, but the Seattle governor and county member wants to go. So if you could, before you leave tonight, let me know that you're at least interested, so I can get everyone registered this evening. And then secondly, um the ballots came in for the November election. So we're all sent out to anyone who's requested an absentee ballot, and we're all sent out last Tuesday. Um so just another reminder to get your absentee requests submitted. The earlier the better that we have time to mail back the ballot and get it and everything before Election Day.
If we have to, two things tonight. Yes. Tim?
Uh just a clarification, the mandatory general contractor meeting is on the sixth of October, nine-thirty in the morning here at City Hall, so.
Absolutely.
Check check the posting in the paper, it'll be posted Thursday and again Thursday, and online.
And online, it's all there. Mike Gargano?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jason Schulte?
Nothing tonight.
Greg Branshway?
Nothing tonight.
Derek Frat?
Nothing tonight.
You were just about to say something. I have nothing else, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Motion by Gargano, seconded by Branshway. All favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Didn't think so. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
He has to, he has to create it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only idea they had was putting it on.